Hi, everybody. And welcome to Meet the Candidates tonight. I am Ava, and I serve as publicity for the UTEC Council. And tonight we have the UTEC Council helping us. And first, we're going to start off with a pledge. So if you all stand and join in the pledge.
I'm (Inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, now we are going to turn the time over to Christina and Josh.
All right, we'd like to thank everyone for coming out today to the Cedar Hills City Council Meeting and Greet and Debate. My name is Joshua Walker. This is Christina Wiesmann. We are the co-presidents of the American Fork Chamber of Commerce and the Lone Peak Business Alliance. And as such, we act as a neutral entity. We don't take political positions on local levels. And so we're able to host events like this and invite candidates to come and talk about the issues, introduce themselves, and help the community get to know where they stand. And so I'm going to turn the time over to Christina. She's going to go over the order of operations, our agenda for tonight, and then we'll introduce Val Hill and we'll get started.
Thank you. Okay, so the first thing that we're going to do, we drew candidate names out of a hat so that they would be seated randomly. And we are going to give each of them two minutes to talk about, introduce themselves, talk about why they're running, and whatever issues they would like to turn that two minutes. And then we will, we have questions that have been submitted. We got some emailed to us. We'll go through those questions. We will have Val ask the questions and moderate. And we will start with the first candidate, who will get to answer that question first. They'll have 60 seconds. We'll move to candidate number two, three, four. And then at the end of that, you have 30 seconds if you would like to rebut. And then the next question, we'll start with candidate two, who gets to start. And we'll move to two, three, four back to one. And we'll just keep rotating through so that each person gets a chance to be first and a chance to be last on the questions. And at the end, we will wrap things up with just a 90-second kind of "Why should you vote for me?"
So real quick, our moderator, Val Hill, he has been gracious enough to accept to come out here and moderate for us. So Val, most recently, served as the Executive Director for the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity. Before that, he was the President of the Utah Valley Chamber of Commerce. And way back in the day, he was the Athletic Director for BYU. And so we are very grateful that he's out here tonight to moderate. So we're going to have the candidates start. And we have Rachel Ray right there. She has a timer. And so two minutes are going to be going. And then boom, once it hits zero, your time's up. It'll move on to the next person. We do ask that everybody hold their applause until the very end. And then we'll invite everyone to applaud all of our participants for being a part of this evening. And so without further ado, we'll turn the time over to our candidates for their introductions. And then we will have Val start asking the questions. Thank you.
I drew first, and then I couldn't figure out why the timer comes next to me because I had to go first. I'm Kelly Smith. I've had the privilege of serving on the City Council for the last four years. And just a little bit about me, I've been married for 34 years. We have four children and six grandchildren. And we, I grew up in Dallas, Texas. And then we moved here after college in 1993. We raised our children mostly in American Fork. Our youngest daughter graduated from American Fork High once we moved to Cedar Hills in 2014. And, but we were still in American Fork High's boundaries. So that worked out really well for us. And we love, we love the area. We really love American Fork. And we felt like we just got amplified by being in Cedar Hills. So we love, we love the area and the friends that we made here. I have, I'm a retired school teacher. And so I first moved into the community. My parents always taught us to find some way to serve wherever we were at, whether our children went to school. I volunteered in their classrooms. I was CTA president at a number of schools. Tried to just, you know, be room mom. Whatever I could do to just improve where we were at. And the same thing in our church responsibilities, just to kind of make any place that we are a better and viewed. So when we came to Cedar Hills, I tried to find a way to volunteer. And so I started out on Family Festival, which by the way is amazing. There are some other great places in town, but Family Festival is pretty awesome. So I started there. And I was just really impressed by the city staff and by the people that I worked with on Family Festival and just kind of seeing that whole thing come together. And so that was kind of my first spark of working in Cedar Hills. And then I retired that year. And so I was encouraged by some people. There was an election coming up to run. And so I put my name in. I didn't have to run. There were only three of us with three seats. So even though I've been on the City Council for four years, this is my first time to have to do an election. So this is my, anyway. I'd like to continue to serve.
Hi, my name is Mike Yennis. And I'm really happy to see everybody here. If you've been to City Council over the last almost too many years, you probably see my face. So I'm happy to run again. And I love Cedar Hills. I just wanted to say, that's the first thing I want to say. I love Cedar Hills. I've lived here for about 24, 25 years. I think we've lived here, my wife and I, and my four sons. They're, they're all grown now. I used to say I had one living here, but he just moved to Pleasant Grove. I built him a house. So I'm a general contractor and a developer. And that's what I do. And so with that background of knowledge, it's been very interesting and fun to be on the City Council. So in my whole career, that I'm in the dawn of my career, or the sunset of my career, I should say, the sunset of my career. I used to spend a lot of time before City Councils and the planning commissions. And I would be on the other side, you know, pushing for projects and things like that. So I understand the whole process. It's been very interesting and fun to be on this side and fun to make good decisions. And that's really why I ran. I really felt like it was important at that time to make good decisions. And I'm running out of time. So I'm just kind of making it to it. I didn't even put, I didn't want to go with the things I wrote down I wanted to say. But anyway, I'm really proud of our parks. I'm proud of our golf course. If you know, I'm a huge golf supporter. We took the recommendations of our Blue Ribbon Golf Committee that we set up years ago. And now it's paying dividends. Our golf course makes a lot of money for the city. It's a good thing. I'm so grateful for the great city staff that we have. And I think we've worked really hard to live within our means as a city. And I've been, I feel like I've been part of that to help us do that. And I want to continue to do that. Thank you.
Well, I'm Mark Nelson. I'm the reason that these guys have to campaign. So here I am. Regardless of whether you were born here or are a transplant to Utah Valley and Cedar Hills, no doubt, you most likely did so because you cherish the same qualities and attributes that I have loved my entire life, having lived 47 or 50 years in this great place. When my wife and I decided to build our home in Cedar Hills 18 years ago, we did so before we even had children. We knew we wanted to raise our family in a place that had values that mirrored our home: family, faith, community, and country. And even though our path of bringing children into our home was full of struggle and disappointment at times, we're thankful that we had the foresight to establish our home here when we did so we could welcome our adopted son, as well as our other two children, into our family in such a great community. When we built here, it wasn't for a property investment. It was for an investment in our family, a place we could call home, a place where we could spend the rest of our lives. I've been attending City Council meetings regularly for the last couple of years. I've become familiar with the council members and the city staff through these meetings. I've questioned, commented, and helped where I could to benefit our city. I've worked on projects and continue to work on projects that have saved our residents thousands of dollars. My education and work in the construction industry and as a small business owner and manager has provided me with the experience that is ideal for a position on the City Council. We have a lot to be proud of in this city. And I hope to learn my talents to improve on those things. And I hope you'll consider voting for me.
My name is Bob Morgan. I currently serve in the City Council. And I do that with great pleasure. And I have immense admiration for the other members and for our city staff. And I'm here to tell you, our city is in great hands right now. I've lived in our city for over 20 years. And I'm running for reelection. So I'm asking everybody for their vote. I love our city. And I'm amazed at the progress we've made in the last 10 or 12 years. Our city is full of some great, great innovative people and ideas. And I'll lean on them and learn as well. Can I make this promise to you? A vote for me will mean that you have voted for someone who will not be outward, will not be out researched, will not be out studied. And I will always listen and make decisions based genuinely on what's good for our city. And Teddy Roosevelt said something, and I would like to quote, it's one of my favorites. "It's not the critic who counts. It's not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles or whether a doer of deeds could have done better. The credit belongs to the man that is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, whose strides value may rule errors, comes up short again and again because there's no effort without error or shortcoming. But who knows the great enthusiasms and the great devotions who spends himself in a worthy cause? Who at best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement? And who at worst, if he fails, at least he fails well there greatly." If you want a candidate who won't be outward, who will not be out researched, who won't be out studied, who will listen, who's marred by sweat, blood, and integrity, vote for me. And if you want a cookie, they're tasty.
Well, thank you. So let me just tell you, you've got four great candidates here. You're like you said, I live in Orem. Our City Council race is a knock-down drag-on fight issue. So this is, this is kind of nice. You have wonderful candidates. Thanks for inviting me to be here with you. I have a lot of respect for some of your leaders in the past that I've known. Really outstanding people. And it looks like, you know, you folks choose wisely here in the city. Thanks for coming out tonight, by the way. Unfortunately, as you know, in Utah, all over the country, municipal elections are typically a lot less, I was going to say attended, voted on than the other elections. I think the last time Utah had a municipal election, about 33% of the voters in Utah County voted, as opposed to, it was over 80% in the presidential race. So, you know, for you to be engaged and choose to come out tonight and to follow city politics is really important. I encourage you to continue to do that. Great, so I've got these questions that have come from some of you. This first one may be a little redundant, but let's, let's go ahead. And we're going to start with Mike. Question reads, "What experience do you bring to the council that others on the council don't have?"
All right, thank you. I think that's very easy one. I've been here nine years. And I bring a lot of, there used to be a term out there, "gravitas." It's overused, I felt, but I'm kind of, I'm kind of older, gray hair, white hair, I guess. And so I do bring that sort of seasoned decision-making. And I'm really proud of the fact that what I do bring is the fact that I'm not, I'm not afraid to make a decision. I'll make a decision. I'll stand by it. And I'm, I'm not always right. But I feel like I will always have it well researched and well thought out before I make a decision. I'm not afraid to make a decision. It's what, what I do. Have to do that all day long, every day. I make decisions. And I feel like I make good decisions. Because most of, my wife is in tears, so. Like, she's visiting Lakeview Park. She's taking care of the grandkids in Oregon. So anyway, that's what I add to the council. And I'm happy to continue to add that.
I love that voice. Okay. Well, I'm a native of Utah County, like I had mentioned. And I do understand the values that we hold dear in this county, so lovingly called Happy Valley. And I, I totally agree with, with all those values and hope to, to keep those values strong here. I also just have potentially a different perspective of things. I still have a six-year-old in my house and represent many of the families in our city that are in those same situations. I also have never been, I guess, should I say rich? I've had to live on a budget. And I know how important that is for many members of, or citizens in the community. And so those, those type of, those type of things are very important to me.
I know for a fact that I have the most grandkids. I have 11. Now, I've started very young, which gives me the ability to negotiate very well. One thing that I do bring to the table is I am very astute at studying, researching, and looking for what the best solution is. And I'm not afraid to make a decision whether it, whether it is what people want or what is best for our city. I run a company called Disruptive Leadership. I teach managers how to become leaders. And I think that's what the City Council does. They, they are leaders in our city, showing us the way that it should be done. So I appreciate that.
Okay. I, I don't know. I wouldn't pretend to say that the other candidates don't have these qualities. But I would say, especially from the last four years, that the strength that I bring to the council are communication and collaboration. And I really push every time we've talked about something, how do we communicate this better with the residents? How do we add a new piece, whether it's a city newsletter or, or a weekly email or a synopsis of what we've done in council meeting? Or am I making sure I'm answering all of my emails? And being willing to sit down with residents and actually meet with them and hear what they have to say? Because I know I don't have all the answers. And I don't live in every neighborhood in a city. And so I'm willing to listen to how that affects their neighborhood and then balance that against what's best for everyone else in the city. So I think I have that strength. And then collaboration. You know, we don't get anything done on the council without working with the other council members. There's nothing you can get done by yourself. You can't even get something on the agenda alone. So I think that's where, that's another strength that I have.
Okay. We're going to have, move to the next question. And this is going to be Mark's question to lead off. What is a good plan for commercial development for the city in the future? I know that Cedar Hills is a little bit of a unique community in terms of commercial development. What are your plans for the future for that?
Well, you all know our commercial district. It's, it's very small. And our town is very small. That's, and that's not bad. But we do need to be open to, you know, innovative ideas for attracting new businesses to that small area that we have that can generate revenue that comes to our city. A lot of that, quite honestly, comes through the efforts of our city managers and city staff. We can help support that and be open to the ideas that they bring. And we can also, you know, put forth ideas that way. But commercial is, is important for us for bringing revenue into the city that offers us more services that we don't have to pay in taxes directly. So anything we can do to help that is great.
I appreciate your thoughtful, well-asked questions. That is, since 2018, we've added 11 viable commercial businesses to our city. And, and we've talked about this in pretty much every City Council meeting we have. What kind of businesses? How should we do it? Should we add it? Is it okay? And we're very picky about who, who we allow and what we do. We need, because we have such a small commercial area in our city, we need to be very careful about what we add. Our traffic situation, if you've tried to park West Sway, you know what I'm talking about. I've sort of figured that out. But, so we just need to be careful and continue with what we're doing. And take the advice of the city manager, the planning commission, and look at what they're doing. And continue to add the same kind of businesses we have now. Because somebody told me Taco Bell is the busiest one in the state.
Okay, this is an interesting question for our community that I think is different than other communities. We, I think we have one area that's not spoken for right now. The rest of them have come to us with some kind of a plan, whether we've, like, we're totally finished with working with them. But one thing I think that we do really well as a current council is we really try to work hard with the businesses when they bring things to us. And how can we help you get this approved? How can we help you make this work for you? Less parking, more parking. If you need a drive-through over here. You know, one thing we have to be really careful of is, is those businesses, those people that own those lots have property rights. And so as a city, we have to look at what is our, what is our zoning? And how can we be helpful? Well, we don't get to necessarily pick and choose who goes in there. But the ones who want to be in our city, how do we help you be more successful? And we've tried to do that in a, in a really thoughtful way, bringing the business owners to our meeting and discussing how we can help them be successful in Cedar Hills.
Can you tilt that down just a little bit?
Yeah, there we go. I'm trying to watch it from her.
Lost six seconds. Anyway, that's not too much to say about the commercial area. I'm really proud of what we've done. I, I was not on the council when Walmart was, was brought in. It's been a great source of revenue for our city. I did vote for it. You know, it was controversial at the time. But I voted for Walmart. And I've been happy that we've been able to fill in with around the areas. As you know, the city owns no commercial property. So we don't have a say as to what goes on there. We can critique proposals that come to us and expect them to do certain things that we would like them to do. We don't own any property anymore. So that's the, the commercial zone. I think we've done a good job. We don't really have very much left. So what there is, I think we'll just keep doing what we've been doing. Thanks.
Okay, Bob, this is going to be your lead-up question. What is the biggest or most important problem? And I'm going to give you an option or priority for the City Council to address and focus on. The biggest problem and/or priority.
I think, well, a couple of things. One of, one of the issues that we've got in every city face of this is infrastructure and how we pay for it without, without a lot of debt. And they've done a good job over the last several years doing that with, with the redevelopment, with surfacing the roads. And to tie into that, the, the other thing that I think is extremely important, and we talk about this a lot, is, is keeping our, our small-town community filled with, with parks and trails. And trails are so important to this city. And they're important to me back before I was on the City Council. I brought it up a lot. But those two things, I think, are probably the biggest challenges we face.
Okay. I would say, and it's not necessarily a problem, but it is something that we have to constantly be thinking about, is we aren't growing as a city. In fact, on our last census, we dropped below 10,000, which gives us rural status, which kind of comes with some nice things, too, that we're trying to look at as City Council, which I think we have a strength of looking at anything that's brought to us and any situation that we face and seeing how we can turn that around and make that the best situation for residents. In this instance, we qualify for possibly some grants and some other things that we can do. But we aren't growing. And so that's tricky because we need to still provide high-quality services. We need to be able to maintain what we have. And we're not getting, we don't have these spaces to have a lot of new residents. And so I think that's, that's something that, that can be tricky for us. I feel like we're, we've got a good plan for it, but it's too neat to our city from other cities.
Okay. I'm going to focus on priorities because, I mean, any problems we have, I think we pretty much work through those. And I love the fact that as a council, that we do work through things. If things come up that we feel like, so I've dealt with a lot of cities in the past, and I love to say this, but a lot of times you go into cities and says, "Well, we've been doing this for 40 years, and we're not going to change." And that's just not who we are. If we need to change something for the good of our citizens and our residents and make it happen, we'll do it. So I think it's really important, like several people said, we need to focus, continue on public safety. That is one of our number-one responsibilities as the City Council, is to make sure we continue public safety, public infrastructure. If you drive around our, our neighboring cities, I think you'll agree, the Cedar Hills, Cedar Hills streets are probably the best streets in the entire Utah, North Utah County. So the other thing is affordability of housing. We try to address that with accessory apartments, but there's not too much we can do.
Okay, so yeah, Mike touched on that. I think one of the challenges that we face in our city is affordable housing. Many of us moved here when it was affordable. And now it is difficult to think of how the next generation's going to be able to move into this city and, and afford it. Sometimes there's not that much you can do as a City Council member to do that. But, you know, working with the city staff and others to come up with innovative ways to help alleviate that is, is I think, a priority that needs to be addressed, as well as just continuing to look at ways that we can bring in as much revenue or be as smart as with the revenue that we have with our limited funds and our limited ability because of the size of our city.
Okay, we're back to Kelly. Britta Law, did you get a chance to say anything? Yeah. Okay. So we're back to Kelly. This is kind of a funny question, Christina, not a question you would see in every city. But this is from an online person, an email person. It said, "Considering many members of our community own and enjoy using golf carts, electric bikes, and scooters, and I've seen on the neighborhood Facebook pages that some community members think there is a lot of frivolousness happening with the golf carts, do you think it would make sense to make Cedar Hills an official golf cart community with rules and regulations that can be applied according to the local and state laws and some laws voted in by the community? Do you want to make Cedar Hills an official golf cart community? Is that something you think you have?"
Is that something you'd be good with?"
We actually just talked about this recently, and I did a ton of research, research all over the nation, research to cities that are nearby us. There's a lot of regulations that are already there that we would have to look at. But basically, the state of Utah has given the cities permission. They have said that golf carts are not allowed on city streets unless we say that they are. And there are some tricky things to that. We're trying to balance, do we allow that? And then the state law also requires us to put some regulations on that. Do we make that where residents could do it, but then they're under a lot of obligations? Or do we just leave it the way it is, which is what the other cities have done? There's not another city that has made golf carts allowable. We don't allow people to use their own golf carts at our golf course, so for that part, it doesn't make sense. So it's much longer than a one-minute. I'm happy to talk to you because I have a ton of research about it. So I'm not sure, that's my answer.
So I'll make this short. It's pretty much what Kelly said. We've looked at it, for now, we've decided to just leave it as the state has directed and submitted, that golf carts are not legal on our streets. And that sort of hits me at the core. I'm a huge golfer, but I'm happy to pay the rental. I don't own a golf cart, but I'm happy to pay the golf cart rental fee at the golf course. So I think that's my statement on it.
I think it would be cool. I know there have to be regulations around it, but I also do agree with looking at ways to allow people different methods of transportation and such. So obviously, we can't, you know, have every high schooler cruising around the neighborhoods into school every second of the day. That might not be safe, but I think that there could be ways to look at it to allow some flexibility on some of those things.
Just so you know, Mike does record it, but paying for the golf cart.
What's that?
That was recorded, paying for the golf cart.
Oh, of course.
I'll be up there next Tuesday. I miss you, you stopped some of my time, because I'm not going to take very much time. We talked about this at length in two city council meetings. And there are so many regulations and so many codes we would have to change to make it okay for golf carts to drive legally on our streets right now. We chose not to make any change. And unfortunately, this goes to a very small minority who drive around on the golf carts. There really isn't that many, but to be able to do it, it would... There are so many changes we'd have to make. It would be nice, but it just isn't feasible at this particular time.
Okay, back to Mike. Mike, there are a lot of people in this community dying to know the answer to this. Why doesn't Cedar Hills have a cemetery? And are there any plans to have one? Should Cedar Hills have a cemetery?
Great, that's a great question because it's one I can answer. I've been on the council longer than ever anybody on the council. And in my first term, we hit the cemetery question very seriously. And the city owns a bunch of open spaces that could be feasible for a cemetery. We studied it at length at that point. I'm not opposed to ever bringing it up again, but it was pretty clear from what we learned at that time that it's probably not a business the city of Cedar Hills our size really should be getting into. There's a lot of regulations, you have to have a full-time sextant. That's the person that, you know, sets the graves and does all these things. It's a lot of staff that we probably don't need in our city. And there's cheap plots in Highland and American Fork out playing elsewhere. So that was the conclusion, and I think it wouldn't change.
Yeah, this is another topic that's just a challenge for cities of our size. And being somewhat landlocked on what we have available just causes a lot of difficulties with a lot of different ideas. However, I was speaking to Joyce before, and she was talking about a different scenario that could be a possibility, maybe. It would be interesting to explore. But as for a regular cemetery, I don't see that it would be very feasible.
I'm one of those that talked about five or six years ago about how come we don't have a cemetery? And I did some research, and I've talked to a lot of people about it. And from a business standpoint, it just doesn't make economic sense for a city our size to have a cemetery. As much as I would love to have one, it would be good to be buried in Cedar Hills. But I'm not adverse to bringing this subject up again, looking at possibilities for something else, maybe. But economically, right, it's just not, for a city our size, just not really a feasible thing for us to do.
Oh, sorry, Kelly.
Hi. I'm actually not sure what more I can add. I think Scott's pretty well covered it. Except that sometimes the input we get from residents is, "I have to pay out-of-area fees to be buried in American Fork, you know, non-resident fees, or to be buried in Highland." And my response to that is just an education piece, that you're paying the same fees they're paying, but they're paying it in their taxes. And so they might be paying a percentage in their taxes, and then they get a resident rate, and then we're getting the out-of-resident rate because our taxes are not paying for those things. And along with the rec centers or libraries or other things like that, I think that a lot of Cedar Hills residents and I wanted them prefer a user model where if you use it, you pay for it, rather than all of us paying for it. And so we are unique in that we do that quite a bit. And I know that I prefer it that way. So that would be one thing about having a cemetery, that those services are in other areas. And in other cities, I think you're doing it better than we can do it at this point. But we're always willing to look at and learn from this.
Okay, one, Mark. Mark, this is, I think this is really an important question because it really impacts the culture of the city and the environment in the city. And that is, how would you work with a fellow council member or resident when you deeply disagree on an issue? How do you handle disagreement when you've got too passionate sides that are pushing for something?
Well, food's always good. That tends to help. But that is one thing that I actually really like. I love talking to people with differing points of view and understanding their side. And so much of it just really does come down to, you know, people feel passionately about whatever they have on their mind, just like you have things on your mind that you feel passionate about. And we're all humans, and we can come to common ground on some things. It doesn't mean that we're always going to agree or leave as necessarily best friends, but there can be common courtesy and being able to talk with people one-on-one. And I'm a big advocate of face-to-face. I think a lot of that helps solve a lot that sometimes comes up on social media.
I think I was telling somebody this earlier. One thing I realized early on in my career is that I'm usually not the smartest one in the room. So I listen a lot. Do I disagree, and I will disagree. But one thing that I would never do, and unfortunately, our society is leaning towards this, is to become angry or name-coll or do any of that. We can disagree, very passionately disagree, and I'll listen to what you have to say. And sometimes I'll change my mind, and I'll try to change your mind as well. But it will always be, there will always be, that my disagreement doesn't mean that I dislike you, that I don't like what you're doing, that I don't think that you know how to do the job. And as I said, one of my greatest qualities is I love to listen to children.
Okay, this comes up a lot for us. For every issue that I've ever dealt with on the council, I'll have one resident who wants one thing and one resident who wants another thing. And that's tricky, that's the job. We have to flush that out and finally make a decision. Mike and I disagree a lot, actually, on the council. And there have been plenty of times when afterwards we've said, "Are we cool? Like, are we good?" And we are, because if I want Mike to hear what I have to say, then I want to hear what Mike has to say. And we have a huge influence on each other, not just what we hear from residents, which I get a lot of great ideas by listening to a resident who doesn't agree with me and trying to find some common ground or something that I maybe didn't understand from their perspective. But we do the same thing as council members, and we bring a lot of things to each other that help to influence our decisions because we all represent residents in the city. And so I think just that, being willing to talk and being willing to find something valuable in their opinion that I can use for my decision-making.
Thank you. I'm glad Kelly doesn't hate me. But no, I mean, disagreement is often good, and dialogue is really good. And so I respect everybody's opinion that is the difference for me. So I went to Alaska last year and caught a bunch of salmon. Come to my house, I'll give you a salmon plate if you really disagree with me. Let's talk about it, I'll cook it for you. Just kidding. But I think disagreement's good at times. It doesn't mean we have to completely say kumbaya when we're all done. But, you know, we respect people's opinion, and I respect the other council members' opinion. I'm only one voice, I'm only one vote. And so whatever I say, I can't get anything done on the council with just my vote. So I have to go with everyone, at least get a majority. So that's how I tend to work.
All right, Bob, we started this one. A little harder, I think, for these... What are you willing to do? Excuse me. Please speak on the city's utility bill. Apparently, they've increased a lot over time. Are there ways to lower it? What can you do to help decrease utility bills?
That's a great question. Unfortunately, the society that we live in, it costs more to do just about everything. And our city passes along very small increases if there is. In fact, the last couple of years, I think we raised the recycling and garbage rate 50 cents or a dollar because that's what waste management wanted. We don't make a lot of money off of our city bill. Lower net, there are a few things that as residents we could do. We would save water. Your bill would go down if you would recycle those kind of things. But overall, if you look back through the years, our utility bills are really not that high convertible.
Okay, we try as a city just to simply charge what we need to charge. Like, we're not making money on the utility bills. We had, what Bob was mentioning, we had a fee increase. The first time that we had it, we absorbed it as a city. The next time, we've said as a council that those need to be passed on to residents. And here's my reasoning why, because we all share in those increases, right? And we're all sharing, if we take it out of our taxes, if we take it out of our city money, that comes from somewhere else in the budget. And we also want residents to be cognizant of these raises. So if it goes up from waste management, we want you to know that that's why your bill went up. So if it went up 50 cents, then we all need to share that together. So utilities are tough. It's not a really good place where we can cut things. We need to provide quality services, and we use a lot of vendors for those services. We don't usually do a lot of that ourselves. We have made a lot of cuts. Happy to check with you about what those are. These aren't minute questions.
So here's my first point. I'm going to respectfully disagree with the premise of the question because if you look at our utility bills over the last 10 years probably, you would probably be able to say, I could probably say with uncertainty, that we have not even kept up with inflation, just with the cost of living. If we had the cost of living index tied to our utilities, I would be very surprised if we're even close to what the cost of living has done. So, but nevertheless, we are subject to the places that we... Like, we, our sewer, we don't have a sewer treatment plant. We send our sewage through the Tempanoga Sanitary Sewer District. And we're collectively a part of that district, just like all the other cities. We pay their fee, we're obligated to pay what they charge. And we have the ability to be on their board and make decisions over some of the things that affect us.
Well, as fiscally minded as I am, I think our city does a really good job on the utilities. I've looked at my utility bill every month for 18 years and have generally been pretty happy. Now, a lot of that does come to personal decisions on, you know, how much you water and how many garbage totes you have. But we are stuck with certain services that we cannot dictate the prices on. And I understand that. I don't want to pay more for gas, but I am. I don't want to pay more for cars, but I am, or food. And some of these are just forces that we don't have a lot of control over. But I do know one thing, I know our city does a good job with it, and they are not wasteful, so...
All right, Kelly. Started out, yeah. Goes around fast, doesn't it? Okay, this question has to do with trails, okay? Says, "Do you have any plans, or do you think there ought to be plans, to improve existing trails in the area? For example, adding gravel, smoothing out, et cetera. What should Cedar Hills do with trails?"
Hey, we talk about trails a lot. And this goes back to the other point that I made before, is what one resident thinks improves a trail and another resident thinks ruins a trail. So it's really tricky, what do we pave and what do we leave natural? We try to really prioritize maintenance of our trails. And we do have discussions about paving areas or those sorts of things. We just approved a plan to redo some sections of the trails on Forest Creek. If you've ever been on that one, it's gorgeous. It's one of my favorite ones, but right now it has some dips and some tree lines and some things that we need to do. So we did just approve that, not widening it, not changing it from its natural state, but maintaining it. So we do spend a lot of time talking about trails because we know that residents value that. And we want to make sure they're maintained and maintained regularly so we don't have to spend money after they've been ruined. But they are well-used, and so it is an ongoing job for us.
So I love our trails. And a few years back, when I was turning 50, I trained for marathons on our trails. So from my house to the Mount Provo Canyon, through the Forest Trail. I live down by Deerville Elementary, and it's exactly five miles. I did my five-mile run. I loved it. Every day, if I ran my five-mile, I ran longer, that was always part of it. So, but I would like to say that just like anytime you live... Like, I'm a builder, and I'm often given the opportunity to go into someone's house and make changes, remodel, update. Just as you would make updates to your home, when they get old, or they're worn out, or the faucet is done, leaks, doesn't work, needs to be fixed and repaired. And we, as a city, take that as a responsibility to do that with our public infrastructure. Trails is number one for me. Thanks.
Well, the trails are one of the reasons that we moved to Cedar Hills. It's just such a great asset to our community. And I know we can talk about which ones need to be repaired and which ones don't, and this and that and the other. But I'm actually a huge advocate of expanding our trail system and expanding a more primitive trail system in our foothills that the trail runners and mountain bikers can use, which we are just not taking advantage of. I firmly believe that getting people outside and in nature is one of the best things for people. I think it helps with mental health. I think it helps with physical fitness. It helps with so many things. So anything that we can do to help with that is just going to benefit our citizens.
Our trails is always a touchy subject, and I'm glad when we bring it up in city council because we get a lot of people there. And it's kind of nice. We, if you don't know, and Kelly touched on this, we have approved repaving the Forest Creek Trail from RV to Cedar Hills Drive. If you run in that trail, there's places that contribute. It just needs to be fixed. When it was done before, it wasn't done right, but it's going to be this time. And I'm looking forward to when that is done. The trails are one of my passions. I love our trails, I talk about them all the time. When we talked about widening the Forest Creek Trail above that, we probably had 40 people at our city council meeting about how we can do that. So the trails are really an important part of the city, and we always need to make sure that they're maintained and provided.
Okay, last question before we turn the time over to each of you for a 90-second follow-up. Mark, or Mike, you get to start this one. Last question. Should there be terminals for city council and mayor?
Ouch.
That was just, that just came up. Right, Josh?
Very nice. Possibly. I don't know if you get too old to serve. But honestly, when I originally contemplated running again for city council, I had told everybody, "I'm not going to run again." This is, it's time for someone else to step up and have as much fun as I've had. Because I really have had fun. And I just, in my talking with our current city council and our wonderful mayor, I was just convinced that I dislike what I do. And I think I add a lot to the council as far as my senior look at it. So, Bob's great, too. He's just as old. Mark's getting up there. I don't know.
I have a six-year-old.
I'm pretty young, and so, you know, I just, I'm happy to serve again. And I don't really know if you need to term limited. I'll naturally walk away when I'm done.
If only every politician would dance away when their term was up. I do think that there should be term limits. I think that a maximum of two terms, sorry, Mike, is sufficient. There is a wealth of amazing people in this city, and we need to hear from them and have their voice heard in all of these debates and decisions. I'm not a politician. I am a construction guy. And I have worked in the trenches a lot of my life. And I just felt like I needed to participate. But for me, I would prefer everybody just do one term and move on and let someone else come in and share their talents. But I do believe that a maximum of two terms.
When it comes to the city council, I don't think that term limiting makes much difference. I haven't seen an issue in my 20-plus years here. And I just don't think there's a reason to make an issue where there isn't an issue, which our political society right now does. So, no, I don't think there needs to be term limits. I think that after two terms, you probably are going to want to quit. But I'd be okay with maybe somebody wanting a term, serve three. It's interesting, there are such great people in our city. But then you run for city council and you see who's running right here. You know, in that sense, it's a little disappointing. But I don't think there needs to be term limits, no.
Okay, this one's tricky for me, too, on a couple of levels. One thing we talk about a lot on council is that we like for issues that we deal with to be resident-driven. I've never had a resident mention that to me before, that they want to term limits. It's not something I necessarily would look at. But it's honestly never been brought up before. I can say that on the council, we really appreciate Mike's institutional knowledge. There's a lot of times when we turn to Mike and say, "What happened that many years ago?" And, you know, but it's super nice for him to say that. We already talked about that. We already voted on that. And so I appreciate that. I think it would be really tough to have everybody be brand-new, kind of be like starting from scratch every four years. So I think as long as people are willing, the people who are running, first of all, get elected by the other residents, and as long as they're still willing to listen to people and still be open to new ideas, I think we're doing okay on that front. So I'd be willing to look at it if it were really resident-driven, but I don't think it is right now, so.
Okay, before we have our 90-second finishing statements from the candidates, I just want to encourage all of you to do your due diligence, to study the candidates, call them up personally, look at the city website. Your ballot will arrive in the mail right around November 1st. So what's that, a little earlier this week and a half? They're coming. And so when that ballot gets there, if you feel comfortable with your choice, fill it out, send it in. Don't wait around. But, you know, I would challenge each of you to really study the candidates, talk to them, read about them, and get to where you feel good about your choice. So, Mark, we're going to start with you. You have 90 seconds to give a closing statement.
All right, so, like I said, I'm not necessarily a big career politician or anything of that nature. But I do think that everybody can feel prompted or pushed to serve in various capacities. And that's why I have felt to participate in city council meetings and to throw my hat in the ring against these guys. And really, there isn't a bad person on our council. They really are good people, and they try their best. I think my talents can be added to that pool. I do lean more financial on a lot of things. I don't lean in debt. We don't live with debt in our household. And thank goodness, because as my wife got T-boned on Canyon Road a week and a half ago by someone coming out of the mayor's neighborhood, luckily, we had a reserve, and we were able to purchase a new car. So I believe in fiscal responsibility, and I live it. And that would follow me through my candidacy. So if you guys feel like I'm a good fit for the city or could add good things, I would ask for a vote. Thanks.
I was saying this before, I'm going to say it again, someone who wrote some stuff down, because one of the lies we tell ourselves is, "I don't need to write it down. I'll remember." And I don't remember. But again, my name is Bob Morgan. My wife and I, we've lived in Cedar Hills for 20-plus years. And I run a leadership academy. I teach managers how to be better leaders. And I love our city and the values we hold. It's important to me that we keep our small-town community, we keep our parks and our trails amazing for all of us because it's the reason that a lot of us moved here. And to continue to make sure that our city is financially rated AA+, which is the best credit rating a city can have. And I'm deeply committed to transparency, accountability, and ethical leadership. And I'm running for reelection to the city council. It's been an honor being on the city council. And I'm privileged to serve as your representative. I believe in the power of transformative grassroots engagement. And I'm eager to listen to any ideas, concerns, aspirations. Bob, you're doing it wrong. You're involved with my decisions and help shape policies that affect our community. I've made a commitment to walk every street in our city over the next 30 days, carrying my signs, "Please stop." It's my "Get up to vote" campaign. Vote, vote for me. I would appreciate that.
Hey, before the debate tonight, I kind of went through a list of wins, a list of things that I think that we've done well in the last four years. It's pages in this notebook. And so I personally could talk about the city all day long. So I feel like we have to be able to talk about it in-depth about tonight. So if there's things that you still want to talk about, if there's questions that you still have, you can call me, and you'll get an earful, and I'll hopefully get an earful, too. Because I love the city, and I think we're doing a lot of really great things well. And so, and I think the fact that of the three of our seats, all three of us are running again, that says a lot about what the kind of situation we've created on our council, the mutual respect we have for each other, what we get done by working together. And so I think that's a vote of confidence. I would love to continue to serve and to continue to improve the communication. We've got some really exciting things on the horizon coming in January. And continue to collaborate with residents, with our city staff, and with the other council members, which I think is where we come up with our best decisions and the best ideas for the city, is when we all work together. And I would say, I probably harp on the finances the most, out of all of us. I'm constantly asking questions, constantly seeing what we can do differently. And by the time we come up with something we can all agree on, we've all picked it apart and all compromised on it and come up with something that we think is really great for the residents. So I would love to continue to do that, and I'd ask you for your vote.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here. I wish there were more. I always appreciate when people come to our city council meetings and participate in this local politics. They say all decisions start at the local level, and we do. I think we make really good decisions and have really good discussions when topics come up in our city. And no one's afraid to ask tough questions, make tough decisions. And, but we don't have to do that very often. I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty easy to make good, sound decisions. And I think, I'm not a career politician, it seems like I am. But I actually ran originally on a two-year term. It was that someone had vacated, and I said, "I'm running for two years." But I can honestly say that after two years, I really felt like I was just kind of getting my ears wet. And it took a little while to kind of understand our budget and the things that happened. And I've served on some of the boards that our city's on. And there's a lot of things, there's a lot of nuances that most people don't understand about city government. And over my term as a councilman, I've learned those things. And I think I have learned them well, and I hope to continue to do that for the next few years. And I welcome your vote. Thank you very much.
Can I get to go again?
Let's give everybody a round of applause. All right, if you guys can, if you can, people, people, a round of applause. Shout out to your neighbors. All right, we would like to thank the youth council for being here tonight and helping us have this all organized. We would like to thank a generous benefactor for paying for the rental fee for this room today. And let's give Valhalla a round of applause for being our member. And as a special gift, each one of you, we'd like to offer you the world's greatest cookie on Bob's table. Thanks again, everyone. And we will put this on the Chamber YouTube channel for anyone that wasn't able to attend, they're going to be able to watch and listen. So thanks again, and have a good evening.